All right, I have six thirty. I'm gonna call it for the fourth of all, the revenue meeting, Monday, May twenty, twenty-four. Everybody, uh, uh, sit down.
All right.
President.
Woman Hudson.
President.
Woman Decker.
President.
Woman Rogers.
President.
Woman Magley.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution. Um. And to the Constitution. And to the Constitution. And to the Constitution. Three, four on our agenda. We'll open the sale of each end.
They spend four hundred and eighty-five thousand. Um, escalation clause. People ten thousand in excess of next place to the highest bidder. You have to exceed six hundred and fifty.
So, bid is six, uh, there's four hundred and five thousand dollars in escalation. Ex, uh, what did it say? Elevation, uh, two thousand dollars not to, uh, exceed three thousand dollars. Um. Look, excuse me, and then we'll open the other one. There are two bidders, uh, Woodhaven and Inta.
Um, alternative community training. There's a bid of four hundred and sixty thousand. Do you see any other escalation clause?
Can you, can you read the two again, just the two bids? Woodhaven was what?
Woodhaven is a base price of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It is a hundred percent cash bid. They do have a certification from Central Bank of Missouri. They have an escalation clause, but we don't know if that's going to be impacted. Elevation clause was on a ten thousand dollar increment up to a max with a amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, if you need to hear impact, go over here. Impact's. Is four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They have to have a free approval from Congress.
Well, he's standing, he's working up there. Those are good bids, looks like to me. These are, this time, we'll discuss the way that we're doing the bill. Uh, we're gonna have the. We're gonna have the, uh. Commentary citizens is next, so we should include the bidding, so it's time for committee five commentary citizens. This time, I would welcome any comment, any citizens. First, I would, I would say that Prime Lawrence intends to be here for the, uh, the head of opening that we had. But if you're not here for that, to have comments from citizens before that, you're welcome to go first, and then we're gonna take anybody. So, anybody here other than, or available, or, or in relationship to the, uh, the citizens of bid. Okay? So, that being said, then I'll put up the floor for, uh. First, I would ask, is your representative from, uh, Impact, is your representative from, uh, Woodhaven?
Yes.
So.
We're Woodhaven.
Woodhaven?
Impact.
Impact, of course, works here. Okay, so we've had them first, right? So, what we'd like to do is ask, our plan was to ask the representatives from both organizations to bid. Thank you for your bids, for your form of, and thank you for the services you provide. Uh, if you could, we had some questions that we were gonna ask. Each of you all has the leadership or people that are the authority to get answered these questions. Each come forward and do that. So, if Woodhaven would want to come forward first, it doesn't really matter. Um, somebody, representative of Woodhaven, come up and state your name, and your product, and his name, for the record. And then, uh, our attorneys have asked, uh, six questions that we had, we had.
Michelle, will you give me that?
Yeah, absolutely, they're all welcome to. Say your name, and, and when you're ready.
Michelle Davidson Bell, hi, from Woodhaven, fourteen oh five, Tappan, Columbia, Missouri.
And Michelle, what is your role at Woodhaven? That's another question, I don't really care what your position is.
I'm Assistant Director of the Day Program. Can you, can you, the Day Program?
The first question is, please describe the services that your organization provides, including day services, overnight services, other such services that you value.
Well, this is our sixtieth year of providing services to people with disabilities. We provide residential services. We have over hundred folks in placement, one house, of what, twenty-three homes and apartments. Uh, we have some people who have overnight support services, if you were interested in, I think you've heard that, wanted to know that. So, yes, we provide services overnight, twenty-four seven, every day. We have unemployment services, we have, um, Day Program Services, which I work for, and I also have four homes that people rise to as well. And we have, uh, personal assistance programs for people in mental health, they come out to the community, work on homes to help them be more independent. And, uh, we work with, um, a lot of people on autism spectrum or neurodivergent. There's in circle technologies in that program.
Does your organization have any pending complaints against the business by any regular agency within the state of Missouri, federal or otherwise?
No.
Are you licensed, or is Woodhaven licensed and in good standing within the state of Missouri, and are you able to provide a certificate of standing?
Yes, well, that's the part.
I think you answered this question, I'm gonna just answer it further. How long has Woodhaven been in business, and how long have you been in the city of Centralia?
Um, sixteen years, and it will be the beginning of us providing services in Centralia.
How many employees does Woodhaven have?
Over three hundred, three thirteen, three thirteen.
Last question. Will Woodhaven have any special requests, such as additional parking, or additional infrastructure needs or enhancements required of the city of Centralia if you are selected as a member of the board?
No.
Sure thing. Uh, so you have an intent to, uh, invest in, in their programs, in, in Centralia, is what I'm hearing about?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I actually helped, that's the beginning of the Day Program here, under staff, many years ago, so I was down in the building with Earl Bennett, got it going, worked with the family support, pointing there, so I'm very familiar with the services the Day provide, and we would like to continue to do that.
Any other question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to back up, please?
Hi, this is Ronnie. Jessica Pemannion, with Impact Support Services. I serve as director of the Ratchet Quality Insurance and Trading. Do you need our corporate address, or am I a personal address?
Uh, I think the back corporate address here is, normally we go with the personal address, because of the connection with the city of Centralia.
Six five seven three Audreyan, Road one oh nine, Centralia, Missouri.
You heard the question we asked before, I'm gonna ask you some questions, and you, starting with, please describe the services that Impact provides, including day services, overnight services.
Well, we provide wide, great, wide array of services. We do provide residential services, it's called individualized supportive living. Individuals in their own homes, our apartments. Those are twenty-four hour services, so we have staff that staff those residences, and we also have a twenty-four hour open line to get to management if needed. We provide respite services as well, and that's to assist families who still have the individual home, individual home living with them, so that the families can get less spent. Those services are provided within the individual's home, or sometimes in the community as well, we take individuals out. We provide community networking services, which is really geared towards helping people develop relationships, hook in the community, stuff on parks and loops and clubs. We provide career services and employment services. We've actually, um, had a couple of summers where we've done it with Earl Bennett through the city, and we did it at Priner Foods one year, so whenever there's students of the right age in this area, we try to do a summer with experience here as well. And day services, obviously, we provide here currently in Centralia. We also have a site in Columbia, and we're opening a second site in Columbia.
Does Impact have any pending complaints against the business by any state entity, any federal entity, or any other regular body?
Not currently.
Is Impact licensed and in good standing in the state of Missouri, and would you be able to provide a good standing certificate?
Absolutely.
How long has Impact been in business, and how long have you been in the city of Centralia?
Um, Impact Support Services has been in business fifty years. Next year will be our, our big anniversary. We've been providing the day services that we provide in Centralia for several decades, but we actually moved to Centralia in two thousand and eighteen. We saw a need, and so we decided to develop a, a service up here. And it, it really assists individuals that live close to Centralia or in Centralia without having to drive Columbia every day to get the services they need.
How many employees have you?
Roughly two hundred and fifty.
And will Impact have any special requests, such as additional parking or infrastructure enhancements required of the city of Centralia, if you are selected as a successful bidder?
Did they answer how many employees are there?
I don't know about, I didn't ask, I put in wait.
Centralia, five, nine, nine, nine is in Centralia.
Any other question?
Yeah, they may, they may, they may have a, they have a, they have a.
Uh, it's very similar, and I know that. No Impact previously would shuttle people to Columbia. How many years was that being done before the six years he did?
I would, twenty-five, I should, please. We've been providing that service for very, very long.
Forning people in Centralia for twenty-five to thirty years.
Absolutely, absolutely. And with the answer to, and I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back to the answer of another of the employees, those are the employees that work specifically out of the annex. We do have employees that commute to Centralia to provide the employment, the other services, the employment services, employment services, that.
The last question, would there be you guys having, uh, people that live in Centralia that you guys, or maybe you shuttle elsewhere?
Oh, yes. We try it.
Any other questions for any forum?
Thank you.
Take comments from citizens at this time?
My name is Ronnie Roberts, uh, I'm a citizen of Centralia, Missouri, my wife Tracy. And my son Trevor, which is a lot. Uh, Trevor is apparently, um, participating in Impact, and has been for five years since they were here in Centralia. Um, when, uh, going to, through the Centralia school system and what he was done, Tracy and I were unsure what he would do. We didn't know if one of us would have quit work, if, um, you know, of what we might possibly have to do to take care of his needs. And then, uh, lucky enough, we found out that Impact was at the same time gonna be started here in town at the East End. And, uh, Trevor's attended there for the last five years. Um, I don't know if you're familiar with, especially children with cerebral palsy, but I can tell you one of the best things about him is, um, he gives them a purpose in life. Um, instead of sitting in a chair all day, and, uh, wondering what he's gonna do. He has a place to go and people are there by him. And I, I'm sure Woodhaven would do something similar, but, um, we would like for you to consider, um, the bid from Impact. And I know financially you all have a strong commitment to make other citizens, but, uh, I'd like you to consider the fact that Impact has been paying the city rent for the last five years, and part of that should be considered, um, in the fact when you make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens?
My name is Tracy Roberts, I'm also a citizen of. Why is Ronnie and Mike? Um. It's not easy speaking. This, and I know your decision is gonna be difficult, possibly, but, um, I would ask that you also consider the fact that Impact has been here for five years. Um, I know there's a financial difference there, but, um, seriously consider the fact that Impact has been here for five years. Um, they've met a lot of needs for those individuals in and around Centralia, and will continue to do so. So, um. I would just ask that you would consider honoring Impact and, and considering the bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from citizens?
I'm Anna Wilkinson, I'm the program manager at Impact, but I'm also a resident here in Centralia. I have been with Impact since we opened five years ago, and when we first started, uh, we just had ten individuals and five staff. We've since grown to twenty-two individuals and are still getting referrals currently, and we have nine staff who we all hire locally. And being in this community, being born and raised here, I have the unique opportunity to create meaningful connections with other community members and businesses that help benefit our program and, uh, the community as a whole. One of those, I have relationships with some of the, uh, members in the school system who work in the specialized department, and I stay in contact with them, and during so, we're able to set up tours for their seniors who are in that program to show them what they, if they want to use our services, and that helps transition them after high school, because it could be, it's scary for parents not knowing what's next. So, having that relationship with them, and then getting to come before graduation helps a lot, so that the transition is a lot smoother. And I also have very special relationships with the families that we serve. Uh, as growing up with them, there were quite a few of them that I've grown up with. Uh, we actually have one who, her mom happened to be my daycare provider, and now I get to serve her family years down the line. And with our staff, we have nine, and five of them currently reside in Centralia, and I think that if we were having to relocate our services, it would negatively affect the program and the individuals. Um, one of those being that some of the staff, they have transportation issues if we were to have to go outside of Centralia, and they love working in the community that they live in. And in doing so, that would not only jeopardize the program, but negatively affect the individuals that we serve, because they do best with routine and familiar faces each day. Why you say that? We currently have ten individuals that reside in Centralia, and then, um, the other few reside in the surrounding areas, but ten are here.
Thank you, so much. Uh, thank you, you're saying, uh, you're supposed to, well, anybody else?
I'm gonna give a follow-up to my opening. Like I said, my name is Michelle Davidson Bell. I grew up in Centralia as well, graduated from high school, my mother still lives here, so one of my family members still lives here. Dad, my grandparents, my relatives, I'm buried in the cemetery here, I'm buried in that, in Centralia. And I mainly wanna do what's right for all of individuals that goes in that program. I know individuals, I know their families, you know, I haven't been with them for several years, but I've been working with Woodhaven, had some health issues, and good now. They just want to provide the services, we don't wanna disrupt anything, we would want to continue the services that had been provided with all of individuals, through staff, the transportation. We just wanna give back to the community, and we just, that's our opportunity. I just wanna say, like, I'm thoroughly invested in this as well. I may not live here, but very close, I suppose, I should be.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other? No, we close comments from citizens. Need for two.
I wanna make sure that the board is direct, while everybody's talking, we're looking for the questions from members, and make sure that the board is aware of it. Uh, up to the, so the first bid, I did mention one of them, Woodhaven is a hundred percent cash bid, they are not asking for an appraisal, they are not asking for any contingency, it is literally, they have a guaranteed access cash on PM letter from Central Bank, and except that they're escalating, it's a six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, appraisals, you know, other contingencies associated with it. Um, the Impact letter, I have to make sure that they would be asking for an appraisal to be done on the property as part of the condition for seeing actually they're not, how much the lender is. This is not a hundred percent cash offer, so they would have to be going through the lender, so there would be a time period that the lender would need to evaluate the appraisal, um, and make a determination on the appraisal price before that amount would actually be approved. So, I wanna make sure that that slight difference is something that should be pointed out, it could be a small delay, and obviously, if for some reason we bid, or the appraisal were not, not what they did, we'd have to fall back on whatever sort of contract clause we would have, they have to go back and, and start to reopen.
The, and overview? All right. That motion is, uh, five, I move to six, um, five to six, consent agenda, be, I would accept it as a motion, accept as a group, uh, unless it was separated out in the question. A, one meeting minutes, meeting the public, until the committee meeting minutes, C, general government, public safety committee meeting minutes, D, the collector's report, E, the trust report, F, the activity report. Um. And first, a second to approve the, since the citizens' public on favor. All opposed, consent agenda. That motion, I've said, account payable over two hundred and fifty dollars, um, grand total of two thousand five hundred dollars, always just six cents. One million, yeah. That is, uh. The owners, you know, it's very nice, yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that, I don't know. We approve the account payable over one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a total of one million two hundred and fifty thousand, hundred seventeen dollars, thirty million cents. Second, if this is second to three, account payable over two hundred and fifty dollars for one million two hundred and fifty thousand, hundred seventy dollars, thirty, I don't know. Although. Move to the, uh, eight, uh, action agenda. Person will be bill number two five four four, legal. Resolution to amend the cell phone reimbursement, uh, resolution.
Right, so, um, last month, we had passed, uh, a amended purchasing policy, and there was language that was changed in there. So, the original purchasing policy, when the resolution that said it stated that employees were to bring in a copy of their phone bill monthly in order to receive the reimbursement, and very common with them, and, um, actually hasn't been done for several years. So, this is just updating that language to, they have to bring in a copy of their cell phone bill to set up the reimbursement in the beginning.
Oh.
Yeah. That's all, just changing that one.
Bill number two five, we'll already given this first, we're only reading by time, I'm saying. Uh, first, this night, if you want, bill number two five four four, we need to start over, reading side of the money, will it fail?
Aye.
Resolution to the city of Centralia, Missouri, amending the adopted policy for, that is related to maintaining, um, for certain release of the city of Centralia, Missouri. Two five four four, be adopted by roll call, the, the. Uh, first, a second for roll call, low for bill number two five four four, favor.
Aye.
Although, pass the roll call, please.
Ollie McCott?
What?
Ollie Lopens?
Four.
Ollie Decker?
Four.
Ollie Rogers?
Four.
Ollie Magley?
Yeah.
Bill number two five four four, passing, uh, order's number.
R dash two four.
And keep. B, most of the increase, the next, uh, all out, back to the next, first, please, please.
Yeah.
That's that, um, you there, so, I mean, listen, I guess, then it's not.
Um, I had to talk to Cindy about it, she says important capture in the motion, and.
Not written, do you?
Can you move for three hundred and four and so?
Change, uh, city administration, get all out, actually, they're one for three hundred dollars. That first, a second to, which changes, uh, Michigan, three hundred and four, all favor. Although. Any motion except the asphalt, and the Richardson Destruction Company, um. And seriously. And, um, there's no reason to, yeah, and having, uh, for sure, it's been two, three years, and they do, they do a really good job, not that they're as working. Others, uh, yeah, a lot.
Is this bid, and is this higher this year than last year, or is it cheaper?
No, it's, uh, I believe we were at, it was either ninety-three or ninety-six dollars a ton last year, they quoted the lowest bid, a hundred and three dollars.
We're doing about the same.
Uh, we're doing quite a bit more.
Well, this is just taken to, thank you.
And, um.
That's out, so, I mean, it is, it's a big, big part of the, of our. There are lots of, uh, that, like, that. There are involved, so, that, like, that needs to be...
It was how much it turns, sir?
Sorry, that's the reason, she just... Big motion to accept... That first, a second to acceptance, we're gonna put on, that's, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Most of the, the motion to accept question, roll, just proposal. That proposal, let me, let's take all, uh, that area discussed by, uh, that song of roads around out to the, down the highway, and, uh, she, it's, it's... Second to accept the, uh, question, roll, just proposal, all in favor? All opposed. E, motion to accept the N U A B equal aid agreement, just to read up on the grant of the president, they have it done in the past, so, wow. Yeah, first and second, we accept the motion to accept the N U A B equal aid agreement, all in favor? All opposed. F, motion to accept the best sale of each act. Question for motion, are you?
Need to, you have to, when they're done, you can, uh, circle them around, prepare.
Two, one.
You can, you can, you can, you can, you can.
Yesterday, the company called.
Um, last one. Impact asking for an appraisal, somebody came in, I think, with that language, it pushed twice.
I mean, what it would do is, there's gonna be a contingency in the contract we draft, but say, although we will see, so if the appraisal comes and lowers, it would give them time to come back to us. We had to lower it down to the grade of, or they had the opportunity to essentially find the difference in the, you know, the cost. So, they could fund right, uh, if you have reserves, you know, that nature.
Or could do that, I mean, that point could do that, you know, it's a long contract. All questions? Um, I think the biggest thing, I have, thanks, and, uh... We have two service providers that pay, plenty more, because they've all provided by the federal, I don't know, she doesn't involve, um, that's what, you know, I think, gave, uh, a serious nod to, to the, the project that was in the building. Um, I think it both services, uh, both companies offered services, or all like tax services, uh, to that point. And, uh, I think it's, it's, it's tough, and well prepared, uh, as well as, so, I think this point, you know, I would welcome any, any thoughts before debate, I think, you know, there's...
Well, I, I wonder, on both of those, because they're badly needed. I mean, we have seen, the emotional testimony from some of the people, and after both of you could bring the same thing, uh, I don't have to give, work within that manner. I applaud and I admire all of you for doing that, I, I really do, I mean, this is really, to me, this is not just about...
Throw that in there too, I think, because that's what we would, uh, actually, the wheel is not for open, you don't fix it. What's good for the community is part of our job too. Uh, it's not always about the money. Working now, the change, it might not work, and it's not, it's not about the money. So, that's kind of where I'm complaining here too. I think they do think purpose is awesome, but it's working very well now, and, uh...
We've got two strong organizations to do similar services. Both will continue or do a great job in this, so no doubt there. One has been through me since August four, all twenty five years. That means a lot, and they've been...
I look at, if you accept the offer, um, impact, which is... And, and this is not an easy decision, please. At first, you need to run off. At first, a second, roll call, please.
All in the cops?
Yes.
Me and Hudson?
Four.
All in the welcome, you. All in the Neckers?
Yeah.
All in the Rogers?
Four.
All in the Magleys?
Passes, the, uh, self of the property has been provided to the impact this time. For all their own self, and, 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 I will say thank you for what you do, uh, in all capacities. I think they're heroes in the world, at least, for our people in a special need, and at any time, our lives can change and mend them. Our people in a special need and at any time, our lives, dangers, and members. And, you know, absolutely have, have, have been doing the service until we have an act. So bottom line is, I can, I can do best service as long as my family's needs. So, thank you, she, thank you for your love and courage, for supporting her, and she did not win the bid today. So, thanks very much.
Before impact, we really might have said that we don't even start comparing eight million and four with the last track. But these don't leave the beginning, I feel like making sure we're out again, you know, that's all that we need to do.
Well, we want to talk about, we will want to talk about some very clear education on what moves in. Okay, and for some reason we don't agree to that, then, then it gets, okay, so, uh. Back to my. Two is what.
Thank you.
Good luck with your decision.
So, this will be.
Thank you.
We would have given you the opportunity, all we, we'd like to back.
We believe that, you aren't going to be in the business.
We're big, thank you for all your opportunity.
Um, so please stay, stay around, we'll, we'll, we'll. That looks often. Discussion, um, item nine. We, the, the area that's quarter twenty two hours, the Fire Department Club, uh, have adopted, it takes two of the year, it hasn't been taken care of in over a year. We finally, it's nice towards the mask, not at all, in any way, in any way, and I love that with those folks, I just think that's a situation they don't have. Okay, I'm not sure if they have an organization that's really going anymore, used to have, you know, yard of month and things like that, we didn't have that anymore. But it's to a point that I can't stand to drive out here and see that corner like that, it, it's got all, so, we need to figure out what we're going to do with that area.
Business across the road.
Well, that, those people you got to keep.
They, they don't help at all, do they?
Yeah, you got to lock them out too, they keep on, uh, but just, i- if we're going to demand that people keep the road, their, their, their yards and everything. Uh, that's, that's the first thing you see if you're coming in, it's a tray, I mean, next thing you're about to fact that the ditch should be clean and mowed. And the first impression you get is the crazy, decent looking.
Mostly reach out to like the boys scout and see if an eagle scout wants to do a project or something.
Well, a project, this is an annual thing, I mean, it's a summer long, it ain't, it ain't one thing you do for a weekend and it's over, you put a plaque and. Oh yeah, it's mostly.
Uncle Hubble, he is.
I haven't talked to anybody.
Not a charity to Hubble yet.
Okay, so from this discussion, we're going to reach out to Hubble and talk to the boys scouts and see what we're going to do.
I don't know.
Otherwise, the mayor's going to give.
Mayor can just weed it.
I'm, I'm, y'all will, you drive over there and. You get it in the right.
He goes.
And I got, I'm ready to leave.
Did he think?
I mean.
I think it would be good for Hubble because they could put signage towards the back of.
Oh, no, no, we, we talked, I agree with that, so, that, that would be a good resolution of that, and then, but, and, and the bottom line is, I definitely want to make sure we reach out to the Florida Garden Club. But I don't know who that is.
There's just one lady, I keep thinking of her name.
Well, that's the problem, we got to find the one lady.
The Markey Hopper?
Yeah.
This is Markey, I'll go see Markey, you know, I'll talk for the backside. Yeah, right, compelling case of this case is how they're going to build. Okay, so I think they're that part of it.
Do you have to offer it to any business if they would like to adopt the spot? We are, we need to. Like, even start by asking, at least if anyone, the rest of the meeting phone one thousand five, you should develop a guideline during the route of thought and give candy, does it remember, does it remember when I do this? Offer it to one group, you want to operate to all, I mean, maybe you share, who you want to receive them. Any good? Likes to adopt the spot, if it's a direction you go private or public, will have the opportunity to adopt the spot. It becomes a public forum and therefore, I believe, to your imagination is about free to pick to adopt the spot.
Before we go too far on that, I'm trying to understand hearing while sitting in this thing was that, was that stuff being maintained? They had to be restored to a way that it was done before, uh, because it was a special, something which, uh. Once they stopped maintaining, that was confirmed that it was mentioned, it'd be there. Had to be returned to.
It's the original state.
Original state.
Okay, what's that, should we know what their original state was?
I think it was, it was, the reason I remember it is because we kind of talked about it, because we didn't sure what the original state was and. I think it was one inch clean, original state was one inch clean and wrapped up, is what it was.
Well, was that the state there or is that us, I'm using that little triangle thing?
I don't know. If we were allowed to.
It comes to, you know, since this is what's out, my point is, we could, we could take and relieve the problem. I, it's going to take six months to, to adopt the spot thing, summer be over, probably have a wreck out there, snowing, I don't know, you'll see. I'd just send the city just take it over and, 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 and round up it or whatever, there's stuff to make up the law, so you know, and get rid of, put rock in there if you need to. I guess you all can figure that out, it can't be for me, because it's probably a lot, I ain't looking.
I need to clean up, go figure out what's going.
Okay, I'll do it, I'll. I'll go do that, let me clean this up.
Do you want to weed tomorrow?
Oh, yes, if there's any rock, I can find the plot.
What, are you in there?
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
What? Jay, can you get a picture?
Yes, sorry, that's. We got to look for the plant. New business, uh, as mayor, I have, uh, and I would accept the motion to accept all of these appointments. One.
We need to break them out.
Okay, when, uh, when you, if you, we need to break out B.
Okay.
A thought?
Yes, so I would take that motion to accept, uh, A, which is appoint Larry Norman to the library and work for three year term. And C, reappoint Melissa Maxwell to the library and work for three year term.
To move.
At first and second, to accept Larry Norman to a three year term and to reappoint Melissa Maxwell to a three year term, all in favor? All opposed, they are on there. Now, you'll have to stay, I would take a motion from, uh, for B, which is reappoint Linda Luke to library and work for a three year term. Looking at first and second, uh, all in favor? Also, yeah, Linda Luke, uh, is on board, that moves the city minister.
Uh, we have, we have, we have, we have that one.
What? I've got, I don't have on, not a sheet.
We could have got a reverse sheet.
I, the mayor's last one to know sometimes, let's keep moving it on there.
He wants to get this weed.
I'm ready, um, okay, apologize, uh, D and E, I would accept, put all four of these together. Yeah. Yeah, uh, um. Exactly, it doesn't pay much. Anyway, D appointments, D and E, which is one, uh, John Todd with his three year term on the Senate Advisory Committee. And E would be to, uh, appoint Nancy Bruno to for a three year term on Senate Advisory Committee. At first and second, appoint John Todd with Nancy Bruno for the three year term on Senate Advisory, all in favor? All opposed. Now, everybody is a point, now works to eleven, the administration.
Um, I apologize, it does not look like I reported it into the packet, we like, we missed it out. It's not in one place, but it's in another place, I looked until I found it. I have it on my computer, okay, well, I clicked, I clicked the link on the website, I don't know why it's not. Okay, so everybody's on same, I'm familiar, um, so last month was pretty busy, um, so. Oh, yeah, okay, so there were lots of end of the year reports due for my zone, um, Energy Commission, the, uh, industrial development authority, and, you know, water quality report. So all of that was, um, turned in, it's just annual reporting that has to be done, um. We also attended, several of us attended CPR refresh course to get recertified, um, in cities, that's the risk interference requirement, that's the two people in each department and. These people are certified, so that's taken care of and we're good for another few years. Um, we did prepare the RFP for the asphalt overlay project and municipal financial services, those are out there, the asphalt, obviously, we voted on tonight, municipal closes, um, end of this month. Um, I am a part of the LEPC, uh, Boone County, and had another one of those quarterly meetings last month, uh, there's going to be a tabletop demonstration Wednesday. Uh, several of us of the city are attending, Harlan will be there, Jenny Harlan will be there, um, they're demonstrating what could happen to pipeline explosion. But it's tabletop only, so it's not a live demonstration, obviously, there will not be a live demonstration, but they, um. Next year will be something where they actually sit out in the field, what are those, that would really, um, want to try and practice on. But this year it'll just be in one room with a bunch of people communicating what their different parts are and what they're doing, which is just sending. Um, also attended and participated in the Boone County Road and Bridge Needs Meeting on April the fifteenth, that was when I was in experience, um. Basically, we come together and decide what the needs are from, um, three or four different counties, and we're discussing Boone County in particular, and, uh, Macabre. And I attended and discussed our needs in our area and, um, actually got one of the three spots to do some intersection improvements on Highway one twenty four, so. What happens there, at two different intersections there, we're hoping for town lanes on Singleton and Lakeview, if you. So if they get voted on by MoDOT, it's a good project and we could see that coming in the near future. Um, I am having a lot of meetings for a new, I think, company, we're in a very uncomfortable and painful place right now, and, um, the transition's been interesting, so. Um, we're just working to get things to turn over. You're seeing microturbines on there. We did go to the Murmurs Spring Seminar, we do have to attend those twice a year, um, spring and fall, fall is always the least, so Harlan will be attending that this fall. We also have a big Murmurs annual conference, but we do have to attend those because we do get points, um, for our annual assessment, which keeps up every year. To vote for them, it's what they did today, um, that did, um, insurance did increase about a little over twenty five. Well, there's two hundred and eighty. It was last week, two hundred and eighteen, two thousand. Uh, one other thing, it might be not, but it is, I'm not seeing it, um, Cindy and I had a work session, and we worked together, oh, thank you. Um, on different projects and chats and more, and that, uh, thank you.
Appreciate you all, thank you for having. Um, Terry, now?
So I'm going to highlight what came out of the work sessions, so Tara and I met, and we're going to start looking at a couple of ordinances to push to, they're also, I'm going to be writing an article on our topic, I'm working on your topic, and then just buy them on place, so you push that out monthly, bi-monthly publication. This month, um, we took a look at section thirty down to forty four, which is about Culver, reminding citizens in the community that Culver started here with responsibility and. That's the whole program, that, um, if the homeowner or the main owner provides the Culver material after it's reviewed and approved by the city, the city will, without charge, provide labor and fill material for the installation of it, amount of film.
They're just putting the culver there and not putting the pedal on it?
Yeah, we do.
No, but the guy was saying, they provide it, they.
Actually, you're learning with this case of material, so if that's something that you need to change.
We need to know what you just tried, right?
Yeah.
He's had that bill.
So, if I have a culver, then I have to sell it, so it's over there.
No, no, we provide it, we don't pay.
You just like the material, whatever materials are used, it's over there.
So, you guys have benefited if the city has this too, and obviously, we're trying to make sure that we, for drainage issues, not. Industry, like, how to have water, ice, you know, that's something. Something in your publication, I think, folks, and Cindy, you're going to kind of look at it, because that's still some lawyerish, I mean, I have to have a reason, I have to rewrite this, and it's not on like. Or, you're not wanting to, you know, take too much out of it, we're just trying to let those, know the areas of benefit if the city. So, um, next publication, so you've been on the subject for a while, we have a lot of discussions regarding the election, about what folks can do, you know, we have a national campaign versus the national institution. Foundation, how, what does that mean, how's it, you know, where, can folks electioneering, you know, go around, collect petition signatures and things like that. Um, so I'm going to write a piece on, you know, basically understanding the, that's happening, the situation of what it means to, you know, following a theory, wanting to establish electioneering. Um, and so the, we can do it August, near September, I am on play, although I will bring the information to the board, so maybe we can take a look at the board and we'll talk about, and we'll talk about. Some things we're going to do that, also going to be assisting Tara with drafting water sales sheet and ordinance, um, kind of meaning, streamlining the way you guys publish your rate versus that in order, if each time you'll have a rate sheet that's got the balance. Figure it out for us, water, paper rates. They're working on small cell ordinance, that, you know, you might have tried the other ones, models, but they do, look at that, they don't think we're going to. Likely to be rolling out that adoption, and finally, I'm working with NML on the ordinance that the city was considering allows, giving some. Service to create franchise fees, we'll pass them back in two thousand and six or nine, I forgot. There was a bunch of litigation, and now there's a bunch of someone trolling out in front of it, and it's a change in the way that, right, that they can be walking over, and we should have our, you know. Quite a bit, there it is. Any questions?
Good job.
Uh, I was going to, look, could you work with the. That moves us into, uh, item thirteen, our city clerk.
Um, and always things to be all popping, all alone, we've had a staff position open, so we've been, Tara and I have been doing the interviews the last two weeks. You can get me. That's fully staffed, so we're working toward that. Um, and meet the machine event last week, obviously, we have a lot of feedback on that.
Great event, you know, make, you know, make sure, I want to make sure that it gets publicized and all the four weeks together by, I know the all two office, what was the great event? Just contrary to both, most people out in there that it was, it was real nice, and I think it was rough, because we moved it to E and D, so families, um, it's still taking off, so. Great event, it was really exciting to see how that went, reward for all the work, cleaning up the equipment, getting it up there, actually worked a lot, and. We didn't, we thought that it was there in two days, so, thank you to them.
Uh, we, no, no, people have been grabbing the thirteen, well. Other areas have been working, kind of having meetings with the chain, but yeah, we. Um, been in touch with the waveskeepers auditors, we can get that process started pretty quickly. Um, to, uh, still time to register for the elected officials conference, if anybody wants to go, the first of June in Columbia, and then, um. NML, probably not till September, it's in Branson this year, but those, that's going to sort of pretty quickly, so in the next couple of weeks, I'll be making reservations to that. There were fifteen, you know, you know. You know, what to. Yeah, they come out of room.
You didn't, uh, convert, like, my. What is that?
June, what's the elective officials, yeah, June, uh, the day. It's Sunday, yeah. I think it, I think it's Thursday, Friday, right? Yeah, it's Sunday. In Columbia. And then NML Branson, September fifteenth. All I got, for two?
For two, okay. Uh, he has Mayra on.
I, I've said it several times, on, on the community rooms, that we don't have any advantage, where are we scheduled on getting that, dicks?
We have to get the roof repaired first.
When, when, when does that come up?
So, um, I have to do, um, a full-on bid process. Not so all of this.
Budgeted this year.
It's budgeted this year, so it's happening this year, um, I did have someone, um, reach out to me and suggest that you go to Bergey, they're an energy efficiency company, so I'm going to contact them to see if they have any ideas. Uh, because we also, we're in the groups and the windows, and then, um, Cindy, could you plan on, on tackling the water damage?
I'll go off, we'll be needing, we need, we need to get on. Maybe the mayor will do it, he gets the weeds, he's done.
Running it out. And whether we really should be running in the mental business anymore, we've got several entities in the town that now have business deals that rent out space. Is that really something?
Well, that area over there, where the government's been in place, you know, small birthday party or something, it's horrible for people, and I propose we continue to do that, because these other folks owe a lot of money. And we have to maintain it anyways, we maintain it.
I don't disagree with that.
And I, and I'm not saying that we did screw up, and, but, and we could raise the cost, well, we could have cost located with that area.
You do.
But, we could do that, I think that we should continue to do that, because it's been there forever, and there's people on fixing those, or still have the income to, to have a party, but it's not necessarily what they would actually, I just, I didn't, like, that. Uh, uh, you could say that with the office too.
I was surprised you were able to have the election in there. Oh, okay.
And the church.
Oh, okay.
What the recent letters, is Carl walking downtown, who is calling in?
Yeah, working with, with, uh, any, I've got, like, a list going and letters gone out in several different places, all that has been.
I checked all three this week, see how. This came up, I didn't have to, I don't know.
Making more.
Oh, thank you guys.